Good evening, and I would like to open up the public hearing of the Putnam Valley Board of Education on the District-Wide Safety Plan. The District-Wide Safety Plan has been on the district website for required 30 days prior to this hearing for members of the public to review. Commentary was also requested and received from the District Attorney's Office of Putnam in Westchester County. In addition, a public meeting was held at the end of August where the public could also come and ask Dr. Luft questions they had on the District-Wide Safety Plan. This public hearing will be held open for half an hour for anyone who has any questions or would like any comments on the District-Wide Safety Plan. Thank you.
Just for the community, just so for the community, let them know, this was originally adopted by the board the last time in July of 2017. So this is just an updated version with minor changes.
Good evening, and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of Thursday, September 26, 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, to begin, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes for the work session business meeting of September 12, 2019.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Luft, moving right into presentations.
Sure. So our first presentation this evening is Ms. Margaret Podesta, our elementary school principal. She's going to give us a quick update on both last year as well as looking forward to this school year. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Luft. Good evening, everyone. I'm Margaret Podesta, and I'm happy to report on the opening of our school year and how we're doing at Putnam Valley Elementary School. First of all, we have a new assistant principal as Jeanette Mastretta moved to the district office, so we welcome Mr. Tom Chickory, who is working very hard getting to know staff and students and schedules, and he has a great personality with the kids, working hard to make connections, and we're off to a great start. It was a busy summer at Putnam Valley Elementary. We had our fourth successful kinder camp year. We had 22 students enrolled, and it was just a very successful four mornings. Transportation was provided, snack was provided for the children, and it provided them just a nice way to transition into kindergarten, getting rid of all the fears and tears before the school year started. We have new windows throughout our building, and of course, this follows the geothermal work that was done in our building last year. We look forward to the capital bond work that's coming our way, but the windows are beautiful, and everything was cleaned and put away and shined before the school year started. We had teachers work together on our master schedule. There weren't many changes this year, but we did have teachers work just on tweaking some minutes here and there as we planned the school year and the school day for optimal learning. We like to prevent as much interruption in our academic content areas as possible. We had teachers work on our ELA challenge planning, and as you know, we started last year with grades two through four with ELA challenge during I block once a week to provide enrichment for our students, also in math, and we had teachers work on their math challenge planning that will begin next month on Mondays during I block, grades two through four. K and one do their version as well. And in the math challenge, we actually differentiate the groups so that everybody gets challenged, but the higher level children are challenged with more rigorous activities and design projects, and so we are excited to start that in October. We had teachers work further on our AIS design and curriculum work for reading and math support, always looking to the very specific needs of our readers and math students. All grade levels met to work on their curriculum planning. Grade one, they wanted to put in here, we met as a building steering committee this week, but science trips were actually designed, connected to our curriculum with even the PON study on our campus. And a writing team met to work on our writing continuum work, looking at benchmarks and grade level expectations, always raising the rigor and providing meaning in our writing, so that will be ongoing this year. Just some changes and some additions. Thank you to the Putnam Valley Education Foundation, who provided grant money for these sensory pads throughout our building. Thank you to our OTPT clinical staff, who took a lot of time to place these carefully in our hallways. As you can see, there are different directions and instructions that go with each path, and you will see children just walking back from the office, doing hopscotch in the hallway and skipping along and doing crossovers with their legs. But the teachers and the students are welcoming this and accepting it, and it's really very, very important, and it's throughout the building, all hallways. So we've had a very eventful but very welcoming start for our students. Our kindergarten orientation and kindergarten back-to-school night took place in late August. On that same day, we welcomed our new students to the district who moved in over the summer, and it was rescheduled, but we had a PTA PVES picnic on our backyard that was well-attended by community members, complete with the bubble bus. We've already had a PTA arts and ed assembly, Steve Max with Simon Says, it was a character ed assembly, and our back-to-school nights took place on September 9th and September 10th, very well-attended evenings, curriculum nights. Our whole-school character ed assembly, to start the year off right, being kind, safe, respectful, and responsible, will be tomorrow during the day, and we thank our character ed committee for all the planning that goes into this and all the events throughout the year. Our PTA class parent tea took place this morning. The PTA provided a nice breakfast for all the class parents who have volunteered to help each teacher in our classrooms. And the book fair will be coming next month, along with a visiting author of Playground Heroes, Dr. Carol Franks Randall, who wrote this book, and the book was bought for each classroom by the PTA this year, and we thank the PTA for that generous donation. Here's a close look at our enrollment. As you can see, the total number from last year to this year hasn't changed by much at all. Our large group of students who were in third grade last year are now in fourth grade, so we have 128 there, and we had a nice, healthy bunch come into kindergarten. We have 109 students in kindergarten now, as compared to last year, we had 97, and they're now our first-grade group at 91. We have five sections of every grade level, K through four, except for fourth grade this year, where we have six sections. We have added a K-1 achieve room to meet the needs of students in this age group, and we have two New Horizons classes, as we did last year. And this is hard to see, but it's just the class sizes for each grade level, and as you can see, the class sizes are actually quite comfortable, anywhere from 18 to 21, 22 at all grade levels. Some successful programs that you know of and that we continue to add and grow on, our math challenge, of course, that I talked about, our ELA challenge. We have our English as a New Language support with our new teacher, Mr. Jonathan Hogan, who's just doing a wonderful job. We have extended library blocks, including Maker Space, the Outdoor Learning Center, it's the perfect time of year to use that beautiful space, our hiking paths that were cleaned up last year, and the PON study. Our sensory room is still in use by individual students at a time when needed. It's right off our counselor's office. We have our targeted AIS services for reading and math that are very focused on student needs, based on our data that we collect on each student. We have a counselor, Mrs. Laura Kilduff, who came from the high school. She's with us at least three days a week, and also up to fifth grade. She's doing push-in lessons K through four in our classrooms and providing the social-emotional wellness content area instruction, and she's a welcome member of our staff. And of course, I said, we have the K-1 achieve, and we have a 3-4 achieve, which is pull-out, ELA, and math special ed classes, and Ms. Erin Crookshank joined us in that position. Here's the video. We have the very special pilot of the Mandarin teaching in kindergarten. Let's see if I can do this. Counting to five in Mandarin. They're learning very quickly. And so, as you can see, Ms. Jessica ties in a lot of song and movement for the students. She reads to them, they practice in circle talk, and she's lovely with the children. She's visiting each kindergarten class once a week for 30 minutes. Okay, and we can't leave out our specials because it's such an important part of our learning community. Of course, the students go to art, music, and technology once a week. They go to physical education twice a week, and you can see children on the rock wall in the gym there. Our fourth graders have the opportunity to take band lessons. We also add in library time for all of our classes, Maker Space, and now the push-in counselor classes with Ms. Kilduff. We've had professional development already this year. Ms. Mastretta brought Foundations Refresher to our school, which is great for our teachers K through three. We have work ongoing with the Writing Revolution, incorporating that into our writing teaching. Of course, throughout the district, there's the Innovative Classroom Academy, ongoing training in our Science 21, which has been updated. It spiraled up to the writing of fourth-grade curriculum this year, our important writing teamwork, and I'll be part of an ELA collegial circle through BOSI's this year to share with other administrators what's going on in their schools and ours, and I'll attend the conference on Educate for Equity. Our AIS updates continue the work that was done last year, where we really looked at not just pulling kids for reading, but pulling students for what they need. Do they need fluency? Do they need word work? Do they need how to learn how to write in response to a reading piece? So it's very structured, based on their actual and specific learning needs. We meet, of course, we have Mr. Coleman providing the math AIS. He also provides push-in support into classrooms, and he pulls children who just need a little boost into what he calls a math lab. Every quarter, we meet as a data team, and we look over the data on our students, whether it's from their I-ready assessments, their DRA levels, their foundations levels, and high-frequency words, how they're doing on their math module exams. We sit as a clinical team, and we talk about that and make sure all students are getting what they need. This, of course, goes in line with our RTI meetings that take place a week in our building. Other areas of professional support, of course, that we are lucky enough to offer our students are speech, counseling, lunch support groups for counseling, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. And so now I get to tell you about our impressive state data on our exams. This is a chart showing how we rate with comparative districts in ELA and math in grades three and four from spring 2019. And I'm very happy to say we rank number one in all of the areas in grades three and four, ELA and math, when we compare ourselves to districts similar to ours. So I'm very proud of our staff and our students for all of the work that's gone into that. Going forward, in New York State, for the science test, grade four, we had a 99% passing rate. So that's the fourth grade, but really, the science teaching begins in kindergarten. So that's a very high number. There, you see some innovative classroom furniture there in a fourth-grade room. If we look at this bar graph, it just shows you just over a period of years where the Common Core standards, what we called them in 2013, came in. The reddish bar is where we were in 2013. It was new to us. We looked at our curriculum changes, we looked at the standards and really got to know them in great detail, and as you can see, there's been growth in ELA and in math, grades three and four significantly over these past six years, to the point where you can see where the fourth-grade math is kind of up to the moon right now. And we're just so amazed that our students, the work that's gone into this, the work that's gone into professional development in this district, the investment this district has made in that professional development, it's really showing how well our students are doing. And this again, where if we compare ourselves to Westchester and Putnam schools, some of the top in the state, in 2013, we were about 16th in that group, and now we're fourth, third, and second in that group when we're looking at schools in Westchester. Really impressive. And then, just to note, in grade four math, to get the highest score, you get a four. 71% of our fourth graders in the spring got a Level Four. So those are some strong fifth graders this year, and you know, there's so much work that goes behind that. It's the classroom teachers through the grades, from kindergarten on up. It's the math support that we get. It's the professional development. It's the in-service that the teachers do. We're using, of course, the Eureka Math Curriculum, which is based on the Engage New York math modules. We started, if you remember, full-year professional development in 2014 with that, with a full implementation in '15, '16, and we had four full years to spiral that curriculum and starting to let teacher leaders in the building lead the way with it. In ELA, as you know, we've worked hard to find our strongest pieces of a program, to put them together. Instead of just labeling ourselves or investing in one program only, we're finding the best of what works for the students in front of us every day. This involves Foundations, Wordly Wise for vocabulary, Smarty Ants and online reading for our younger grades, the Engage New York Reading Modules and Domains, Readers-Writers Workshop, nonfiction reading, accountability in our reading, literature circles and book clubs, guided reading instruction that we had professional development with again last year, and of course, the Ready Toolbox and I-Ready Diagnostic Tests, which are providing information to show us what our students need. And the Ready Toolbox is just a great tool that teachers have at their fingertips for lessons and tutorials. As we look around our school, you're seeing more and more artwork on the walls. Marilynna McCormick has done so much in our hallways, and there are more plans in place. The Outdoor Learning Center is looking great, and of course, that shade makes all the difference, and the weather is cooperating. We have a nice list of clubs here, Safety Patrol, Kids of Character, Maker Club, the Garden Club, our new Oceanography Club, and of course, that famous PVS musical, which will come in the spring. Looking ahead, we have a brand-new Ruler team in our building, and we're excited to get started on our continued work with Ruler from Yale, our sustainability initiatives, and we have teachers in the building that lead the way with that, Innovative Learning Academy. We have the Gym Show that will come up before you know it in November, the Spelling Bee in the Spring, thanks to the PTA. We have our math competition, Mick Coleman does online math competition with our fourth graders. Science Maker Fair, of course, which we are involving the high schoolers in an even higher degree this year, we're hoping. And last year, if you remember, some of our fourth graders were able to go to the Tri-County Science Fair in White Plains, and we hope to do that again to represent Putnam Valley at the elementary level. So I just want to thank everyone, our administrative team, our Board of Ed, our incredible staff members who make PVS such an amazing place every day, and I'm just very, very proud to be the principal. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions tonight?
Just, Margaret, when you were talking about the Achieve program, you had K-1 and 3-4. We have no second graders?
We don't this year. The 3-4 is a pull-out program, and the K-1 was designed for a certain set of students coming to us. Yeah.
I just want to acknowledge the hard work that makes all of those things possible, from the administration, the teachers, and really all of the professionals and staff within that building. Everything you see, from what the hallways look like, with the sensory walks, to the scores on state assessments, is truly a collective effort for many, many individuals, so I just want to commend all of the hard work that's going on in that building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we thank the parents for their support, too, because there has been a lot of change over the years, and it takes a community. And really, it's okay to stop for a minute and celebrate, because that's what I told the staff. They put their hearts and soul into this work, and so to acknowledge some things that are working and to continue to grow is what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. That's a busy month. And next, will that be you, Dr. Doherty? Are we at the policy?
Yes.
I like saying Dr. Doherty.
I like hearing Dr. Doherty.
I think that might be the first time I've said it on camera. It's rolled off the tongue next to it.
I must admit, I don't know how, I don't, my free time doesn't seem so free, but it is such a breath of fresh air to not be in school. So I guess this policy, we discussed it a bit last time, we've had a few conversations via email. So really, this is a policy that is really based on regulation, New York State regulations, and I think the way it is written, there was a little bit of concern over bullet number two being put into, there was a question, into the paragraph, that's the second paragraph that's highlighted in yellow up there, and I'll just read it with the way I had rewritten it, and then we can discuss whether or not we want to move bullet number two up or not. So it says, "A homeless child or youth has the right to attend his or her school of origin or the school of last attendance in which the homeless student is actually living. For homeless students, a school of origin can be, one, the public school where he or she attended when permanently housed," that's before becoming homeless, "two, the public school where he or she was last enrolled, or three, the public school where he or she was entitled to or eligible to enroll in when the child became homeless. If that child became homeless after such child was eligible to apply, register, or enroll in a public preschool or kindergarten, or he or she is living with a school-aged sibling who attends school in the district, or the designated receiving school at the next grade level for any feeder school where the child has completed the final grade in the feeder school." So the question really is around, and Janine, you can jump in here.
Yeah, I mean, I think you actually, I don't think we have to move it because the change, just, "school of origin can be," instead of "school of origin is," completely changes the sentence, because it can be the school they were last enrolled. It may not necessarily be.
Exactly.
So I think it's fine, and I really don't even know if we need to re-highlight it up ahead with that, up above, with that little caveat.
Yeah, so I think it's fine the way it is as well. So anybody have any questions about this?
What are, do, I know we've had a number of students who have had fires and have lost housing. Are we seeing an increase in students with economy issues, and are we seeing an increase in students who fall into this category?
We have, and I think in part, it's because we're better at identifying students, I think, under the McKinney-Vento Act. You know, when we register somebody, we have certain questionnaires, that sort of elicit information from families that we never used to get, and it's important information. It gives us a lot of opportunity to put supports in place for families and the students when they're in school, to make sure that they're, you know, sort of have a level playing field. The biggest area we see an uptick in is when students are doubled up with families, living with other family members temporarily, maybe that's for six months or a year, if they, if a parent lost a job and they needed to move, or they had a house fire somewhere, or whatever that may look like. Any student in that kind of a transition with a home, the reason for the McKinney-Vento Act was really to keep the one thing that is stable, and that's school, and making sure that schools work together to ensure that the kids can remain in their home school until it makes the most sense for them to transfer, if they're going to transfer. So yeah, we have seen an uptick. I don't remember the exact number I said the last time. I think it was 12 students last year we had identified, either 12 or 16, I remember one of those numbers. But that's about the amount that we're seeing every year.
And that's a good number for a district this small.
For a district this small, yeah.
Yeah, that's good, not good that they're homeless, good they were identifying.
We're identifying them and putting in supports that they need, absolutely.
It's amazing what two words does.
Two words.
That's just, I mean, wordsmithing is silly, but sometimes it just clarifies. Okay. All right, Dr. Luft. Actually, we have somebody from the PTA PTSA.
No.
We do.
Oh, good.
We do. We'd like them to go first. Would that be okay?
Of course. I would welcome them to come first.
I would like to welcome somebody who's representing the PTA PTSA.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Boyle, and I'm here on behalf of the Putnam Valley PTA. The Putnam Valley PTA has a brand-new, easy-to-navigate website, so we'd enjoy if everyone could come and visit that website at putnamvalleypta.org. It's a place where you can learn more about our programs and sign up for different volunteer opportunities. We also have a new email address, which is putnamvalleypta@gmail.com. So if you have any questions regarding things that you see on our website, please feel free to reach out to us. The middle school book fair took place earlier this week, and our online book fair is still open until October 1st, so feel free to visit our website or the middle school daily announcements for the link. Congratulations to those who were selected to be Putnam Valley Elementary School class parents. We had our class parent tea earlier today, and we thank all the volunteers for making it a great morning. Please don't forget to place your orders for Putnam Valley Spirit Ware. You can order online or submit the form and the payment to the Putnam Valley mailboxes, which are located at both the elementary school and middle school. Spirit Ware forms are available on our website and Facebook page. The deadline to submit orders is Monday, September 30. Picture Day is going to be a little different this year. Picture Day will take place on Monday, October 7th, for both the elementary school and middle school, and the retakes will take place Wednesday, November 13th. We're excited to announce that all of the ordering will be completed online, rather than handing forms in the day of Picture Day. Parents can go on and choose different poses and which pictures they like best, and order right from the website. So we still do need volunteers for this day, so if you're able to help us, please sign up on our website. Our Gender 101 event is taking place on Wednesday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM in the elementary school auditorium. Glisten will present information on the gender spectrum and how to be an ally. The presentation will be followed by a Q and A and a panel discussion, and light refreshments will be provided. If you're interested in joining the fourth-grade spirit committee, the meeting will take place on Wednesday, October 23rd, at 6:30 in the elementary school faculty room. And for all of our kindergarten families, we hope that you can join us for the kindergarten pizza and pumpkin night, which will be taking place on Friday, October 25th, at 6:30 in the elementary school cafeteria. The cost is $5 per family if you're a PTA member, and if you are not a PTA member, it is $10 per family. Large pizzas will also be available for purchase for an additional $10 if you're interested, and we invite every child within the family to bring a pumpkin to decorate. We'll have the materials. We'll also have beverages, crafts, and prizes, and we ask that you please bring a dessert to share, and feel free to wear costumes. And again, we have all of our information located on our website, putnamvalleypta.org, so feel free to go onto the website, purchase items, sign up to volunteer, and like us on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Dr. Luft, would you like to give us your superintendent's report?
Well, now that there's nothing left.
We're saving, oh, no, I don't want to say we're saving the best for less, because the PTA is very important. Go ahead.
I'll try my best not to repeat everything. So I think we've transitioned from opening schools to operating of schools. I think we were past the transportation and the scheduling and where my classes are and all of that stuff, and I have to say, being in the buildings, that things are certainly now back to normal and that we're back to the business of education. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of the work that happened in all three buildings to get us there. I know each of the buildings completed their back-to-school nights, which I know were well-attended. We spoke a little bit about the PTA back-to-school picnic. I know the Putnam Valley Education Foundation is holding their color run on October 6th. The high school recently hosted their financial aid night. We had a Cove Care meeting. Dr. Doherty, Ms. Mastretta, and myself had a meeting with Cove Care to talk about ways in which we can invite them in to do some prevention work. So I know in conversations with Ms. Podesta, we have a plan for how Cove Care will be providing this really free service through the county to our students during lunchtime, recess. eye block, and other non-instructional blocks of time. We recently had our OACM construction meeting. During that meeting, we discussed phasing. We invited in PE staff, music staff, and obviously administration at the middle school. There will be some impact on those areas later in the spring as the construction moves out of the courtyard and into parts of the building. So we just wanted to make sure that all parties involved are aware of the plan. Scheduling is done. I know that we have the, we tweaked the schedule for the middle school play, so the, the construction will not infringe on that in any way. And we've had conversations about the spring concerts and such. But we think we're in a good place where they'll be able to continue practicing on the stage in the middle school until the time of their concert. We also discussed logistics and staging areas. Those are sort of the last two pieces. We anticipate, I believe, the next board meeting, the next board meeting? The 10th, that will be asking the board to approve the documents, the construction drawing documents that will move forward to the State Education Department for approval, so that's very exciting. We talked a little bit about Generation Ready coming to elementary school to provide foundations training. I know we have flu clinics scheduled, the first being tomorrow at the elementary school. And the high school has an exciting initiative going on with Columbia. It's called the Student Press Initiative. I know Ms. Mastrada was there the other day. And it's really a partnership between Columbia and teachers in our school to find opportunities for students to go public with their writing and developing curriculum and coming up with strategies to help students make it to sort of the pinnacle of writing and becoming published. That's it. Thank you.
I do just want to jump in on one thing with Cove Care. Just so the board knows and the community knows, what, hopefully in October or November, we have, I've been working with Cove Care for, I don't know, probably six or so months. I had done a survey in the community, asking parents if we had counseling, counselors, private counselors, located, providing services within our community, within this building, or, or the middle school, would they access it? And we had an overwhelming response saying, yes, please. You know, what happens often with some of our students with, who are struggling with either mental health issues or, or just life and, and the, you know, the nature of, of our world right now. The only place that, you know, you have to travel so far just to, to access any kind of counseling services. So Cove Care and I worked together on writing a grant, and they, they're in the last phase of being approved for their grant. So in order to be able to have counselors located within our buildings, specific offices that will be identified with, for a counselor to see students with their, you know, they'll be brought here by their families. And I think it's a great opportunity for them to have easier access. It really is them just renting the space, for lack of a better word, for us. But I think it really is a needed service for our community, so I'm hopeful that that will begin sometime in October or November. It'll be two evening, two after-school and evenings a week. So once school is closed, they'll be open and they'll go sometime into the evening. So we started with two days, two evenings, and we'll see how it goes. Keep you posted.
It's almost like the concept of a community school.
Exactly.
Where clinics use the space. Can I ask though, all payment is through parents, whether it's insurance or private pay?
Insurance or private, yep, mhm, yep, and parents will know that. It really is like seeing a private counselor. It's really about using our space to open that up because it's a central location for our community.
So there was, sorry, one item that I forgot to touch on. Prior to the beginning of our public meeting, we hosted our public hearing for the updated district safety plan. So that's been something that's been in the works for several months. We held another public meeting in August. We reached out to lots of constituents to get feedback. So I just wanted to acknowledge for the public record that we held that public hearing prior to the start of this business meeting. And the information is accessible online on our website.
Excellent. Anything else? And we don't have students, so there's nothing else under reports right now. So I would like to then open it up to public commentary on the listed agenda items. All right, having none, I'd like to move to new business. And welcome, Mr. Ferraro.
Just in time.
Just in time to start us off with number one under new business.
Resolved to appoint the following as members of the 2019-2020 Audit Committee: Amy Saucer, Thomas Sawyer, Stacey Tompkins, Barbara Parmly, and Guy Cohen.
Second.
Questions or comments? I want to thank everybody for volunteering to do that, especially you two, but everybody else.
Well, we get double our pay. Barbara and I get double our, our board pay for being on this committee.
Which is zero.
Which is nothing. All, just clarifying, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two. I guess that would be.
That's me.
You, Ms. Parmly.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the 2019-20 Districtwide Safety and Emergency Management Plan as per document number 77/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
That'll go on the website as soon as we approve it? Okay, so people can find it, okay?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Cohen, number three.
Whereas Denise Hayes has previously, has been previously tenured as a teacher in the elementary tenure area in the Putnam Valley Central School District and continues to devote a substantial portion of her time instructing in the elementary, elementary tenure area. And whereas said teacher has an AP PR rating for the 2018-19 school year in the Putnam Valley Central School District, now therefore be it resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoints Denise Hayes, who began devoting a substantial portion of her time instructing in English tenure area at the beginning of the 2019-20 school year to a three-year probationary term as an AIS teacher commencing August 28, 2019, and terminating August 27, 2022 in the tenure area of English. In order to be eligible for appointment to the tenure, said teacher must have at least three years of effectively or highly effective overall AP PR ratings pursuant to Section 3012-D of the educational law during the probationary term that may count the rating from the previous employment as referenced above and may not receive an ineffective overall AP PR rating in the final year of probation. Ms. Hayes, Ms. Hayes holds certification in nursery K 1 through 6, English 7, 9 extension.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So I just want to point out that this resolution and the next couple deal with teachers who are taking on additional responsibilities in new tenure areas. So in this case, Ms. Hayes is now in the middle school, where she serves both 5th and 6th grade students under her elementary certification, as well as 7th and 8th grade students, and that's under her English certification. So this resolution is really just capturing the fact that she's now using part of her, her English certification to cover the 7th and 8th grade students. And in the next couple, I know some of them pertain to gen ed and special education teachers who are split between the two, as well as a special education teacher who's also working, or I should say, a linguist, a language other than English teacher who's also working in some special education classes. So these resolutions are just capturing the fact that they'll be accruing seniority and eventually tenure in two different certifications.
So they'll be evaluated during this tenure period in the new area?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Be resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, the board hereby appoints Teresa Boric, Boric, who began devoting a substantial portion of time instructing in the general special education tenure area at the beginning of the 2019-20 school year to a four-year probationary term as a special education teacher commencing on August 28, 2019, and terminating on August 27, 2023 in the general special education tenure area. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three overall AP PR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term and may not receive an ineffective overall AP PR rating in the final year of probation. This probationary term in the general special education tenure area is in addition to Mrs. Boric's probationary term in the elementary tenure area, which commenced on September 1st, 2017, and terminates on August 31st, 2021. Ms. Boric holds certifications in childhood education, grades 1 through 6, and students with disabilities 1 through 6.
Second.
Questions or comments? I have a brief one. This particular teacher, and I think the next one or one of the others, is not yet tenured in her originally hired position. Can you earn tenure working part-time in two different things?
Right. So in their case, because it's a substantial equivalent, which is at least a .4 FTE, they still accrue seniority and tenure in both subject areas. In Ms. Boric's case, she's been a general education teacher. She's taken on part-time special education duties. She's actually the general education teacher for the English and social studies, for, for when we do those lessons. And then she moves to the special education side when the other teacher does math and science. And it's really sort of a, it's our transition from an elementary school model to a secondary model, 5th and 6th grade, has sort of that blended model where the special education, general education teachers are both dual-certified, and they each sort of have the opportunity to, to build the content expertise within two subject areas, as opposed to a common branch teacher, which would have to cover four different ones.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the board hereby appoints Georgia Somer, who began devoting a substantial portion of time instructing in the elementary tenure area at the beginning of the 2019-20 school year to a four-year probationary term as an elementary education teacher commencing on August 28, 2019, and terminating on August 27, 2023 in the tenure area of elementary. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three overall AP PR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term and may not receive an ineffective overall AP PR rating in the final year of probation. This elementary probationary term is in addition to Ms. Somer's probationary term in the general special education tenure area, which commenced on September 1st, 2017, and terminates on August 31st, 2021. Ms. Somer holds certification in childhood education grades 1 through 6 and special education 1 through 6.
Second.
Questions or comments?
For those who have copies or looking at the agenda, there is the typo which Barbara corrected when she read it about the date. They have a date of 37 where it was corrected.
There are a few weeks to summer, that's all.
Wishful thinking. All in favor?
Aye.
And number six.
Be resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools that the board hereby appoints Paul Pearson, who began devoting a substantial portion of time instructing in the general special education tenure area at the beginning of the 2019-20 school year to a four-year probationary term as a special education teacher commencing on August 28, 2019, and terminating August 27, 2023 in the general special education tenure area. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three overall AP PR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term and may not receive an ineffective overall AP PR rating in the final year of probation. This general special education tenure area probationary term is in addition to Mr. Pearson's probationary term in the foreign languages tenure area, which commenced on September 1st, 2017, and terminates on August 31st, 2021. Mr. Pearson holds certification in Spanish 7, 12, and students with disability generalist 7, 12 supplemental certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven.
Resolved the recommendation of Superintendent Schools to approve the first reading of policy number 5151, homeless education as per document number 80/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? And that's what we talked about earlier and made some word changes, or Ms. Doherty had already made, Dr. Doherty had already made the word changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolve to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 9 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE, CPSE placements. We're approving two overnight student trips. Mr. Spurling's taking his 4th grade class to Clearpoon Carmo on October 29th and 30th. And the high school varsity cheerleaders are going to national competition in Dallas, Texas during the month of January, January 30th through February 3rd. We heard a little bit about that a couple of week, a meeting ago. We're approving the educational contract with Carmo for one of our students with special needs who will be getting services in their school district. And my thing just went to sleep. I'm sorry. Just give me a second. We're approving additional hours for staff members who did curriculum work in various grades, and I won't bore you with who they were. That was all done during the summer. We're, we're approving some additional hours for 10 bus drivers and the monitors. And we're approving additions to the substitute tutor list. We're approving someone at each of the schools to be testing coordinations when we give school-wide exams, and we have one at each of the schools. And we're approving six staff members who will be supporting students after school who have special needs. So they'll be supporting schools, mainly at the middle school, who have special needs.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there any public comment on any topic or anything from the Board of Education?
I just have a quickly, because we don't have student members. I just want the community to know that on October 4th, on Friday, it's coming Friday, there'll be early dismissal at our 2 middle school and elementary school because we're doing a practice emergency drill, so the students will be getting out early. On Thursday, October 3rd, that evening at the high school, the Mu Alpha Theta, the Math honors society, will be inducted. And starting on Wednesday, after the Jewish holidays, there'll be sports on every day. And I won't bore you with all the sports, but we have sports and they take place at 4 o'clock. So there'll be sports on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and through Saturday at, at Homes Field, starting at 4 o'clock. Except on Saturday, the big one is Saturday night at 6 o'clock. It's the homecoming for the football team next Saturday.
Is that already? That's early this year.
I attended the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Board Retreat and the training for new board members. I was excited to see, actually, there's two people from Putnam County, Jennifer Daly, who's from Halldane, and myself. They haven't had anybody from Putnam County in years and years, so I think that's really great, and I'm glad that there's two of us. They did send out their proposed resolutions, but their meeting tonight, actually at Lakeland, is the, is the monthly meeting of the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. And they're going over all of these amendments and are going to make recommendations. I don't have their recommendations. There's 26 proposed resolutions. I don't know if you remember from last year, but they will make recommendations either to support, support if it's amended, oppose it, or they can't make a decision. So at the next board meeting, I will bring them, I'll have Maureen send them to you first, just so that you can look them over. But I'll, I'll bring them and we can agree, disagree. You tell me how I'm supposed to vote when I go to the convention.
And where is the convention this year?
Rochester. This is maybe a little late this year because Lisa Davis, who has been the director of the Putnam, Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, retired. Actually, she's gone on to do something else. It's not really retired. But we have a new executive director, Karen Bellinger. So she kind of put off things while she was trying to get, find her way this summer and get everything kind of set up. So everything's been a little bit later, which is why I don't have these yet, so I'll let you know when I get them.
Anything else from anyone else? Okay, then. I am trying. I'd like a motion to adjourn of the business meeting?
Second.
All, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night and a happy new year for anybody celebrating this upcoming weekend.